It's now seven P M, so I will call this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Wednesday, July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five to order. I will start with the land acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of La Shahn. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye Tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. And with that, we will do the roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Moaman.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Pilch.
Present.
Commissioner Wadi.
Here.
And Chair McLeod.
Here. And then we'll move on to item two, ex parte communications. Have there been any? There's only one design item on our agenda. Item three, consent calendar. It's three dash one, approval of minutes. Does anyone wish to pull the consent, or the minutes from the consent calendar? No. Does anyone from the public wish to pull the minutes from the consent calendar?
Please use the raise the hand icon if you'd like to pull the minutes from the consent calendar, or come up to the podium. Nope.
Seeing none, then do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as proposed.
And I'll second.
All right, we'll move on to a vote. Commissioner Wadi.
Hi.
Commissioner Pilch.
I abstain, I was absent.
Okay. Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Moaman.
I will abstain too, I was absent.
Okay, I vote yes. So that's three with two abstentions, three yes. We will move on to item four, public comments. For persons desiring to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda, please note that city policy limits each speaker to three minutes. And the Brown Act limits the commission's ability to take and/or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on the, for a public comment? Go to the city, or anyone online?
Please use the raise the hand icon if you'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda. Or come up. No.
No, no one is here for a public comment. And we will move on to item five dash one, planning application, P A twenty-five dash zero twenty-three, five nine nine San Pablo Avenue. Staff, do you have a presentation for us?
All right, good evening, commissioners and members of the public. My name is Mira Han, Associate Planner with the city. So tonight, I'm here to present use permit application, P A twenty-five zero twenty-three at five nine nine San Pablo Avenue. So as usual, we start with the project locational bit of context. So the five thousand square foot subject lot is located on the northeast corner of San Pablo Avenue and Garfield Avenue. The lot is developed with a two thousand seven hundred and twelve square foot commercial building, which is shown on the photos from Street View, constructed in nineteen thirty-one. In June of two thousand twenty-four, the city's fire inspector identified an unpermitted residential unit on the left north side of the building. The subject property is located in the San Pablo Commercial District, where single and two-family dwellings are not permitted. However, individual live workspaces are permitted with a use permit in this zoning district. So to bring the existing building into compliance with the municipal code and retain a residence, the applicant proposes to convert the building into a live workspace. Live workspaces provide both living and workspace for those engaged in professional or technical fields. During earlier conversations with the applicant, staff communicated to them about the development possibilities of the site, given that it's located in the San Pablo Commercial District and the San Pablo Mixed Use Land use designation. However, due to the applicant's, you know, specific circumstances, a project that realizes this development potential would not be feasible at the moment. So we'll start with the floor plan here, just to show the new interior kind of distribution. So the proposed live workspace is comprised of thirteen hundred thirty-eight square feet to the right and front, so southwest of the building for work and commercial activities here. That area is shaded in kind of like a darker gray, and an L-shaped thirteen hundred seventy-four square foot area to the left and rear northeast for habitation purposes. The live workspace is proposed to function as the place of work and residence for a family-owned traditional Chinese herbal shop, where an in-house herbalist will prepare and mix ingredients for an onsite retail sale. The family will also run a side business for Medicare health insurance sales onsite. During project review as well, staff worked with the applicant to ensure the live workspace is well-lit and designed in a way that residential and work commercial areas are internally connected while kept distinct and separate, providing privacy for the residential area. So as you can see, something that is specific that staff worked with the applicant on is, I don't know if my point there is there. So basically, we worked with them to open this whole space to provide natural light to this area, because this was divided by internal walls. Also, we worked with the applicant to provide more light to certain areas that would be enclosed inside of the building and with the installation of skylights. All right, so that's in terms of the interior. Now for the exterior. Although the project is not subject to design review, right, as it does not alter the building envelope, staff worked with the applicant to make sure the plans include a landscaped front courtyard for residents passive use. So that's in the kind of like this area right here, and that a landscaped strip is provided at the rear to create a buffer between the rear of the building and the parking spaces. All right, so with that, staff received one comment from the public regarding this project. So the comment is in general support of the project and asks the commission to bring up to the applicant's attention the development potential of the site, especially using density bonus to increase the number of units and provide affordable housing. So again, staff reiterates to the members of the public and the commission that we did discuss this with the applicant, but due to their, you know, financial constraints, pursuing a different project would not be feasible for, at the moment. So with this, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission review and approve the proposed project subject to the findings and standard conditions of approval.
Thank you for the presentation. Do any commissioners have any questions for staff? Commissioner Pilch?
Just one question. It stated that the fire inspector found this issue. How did that happen? Do we know?
The fire inspector does, I think, annual reviews of all commercial spaces, so this was part of a regular inspection.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. No other questions?
I don't have any. Do, oh, Commissioner Moaman?
Yeah, is there any prescribed, is there any prescribed proportion between non-residential and residential? Because previously, non-residential were much bigger. Now they increase, you know, residential, so.
Yes, the code does have a proportion or kind of like a ratio, and that's included in condition of approval. Let me see, so forty-nine. It's the commercial residential split. It's saying that the non-residential portions shall represent ten percent to fifty percent of the total space at all times. So that's something that, you know, the applicants will have to take into account when they submit for building permit.
Got it, okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any public comment? Anyone in the room would like to comment on this project, or anyone, we have someone online, it looks like.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Alinka Brennan, and my husband owns the building next door to them, five ninety-one San Pablo. He used to practice there, but he sold his practice, but he still owns the building. And I just have one question. Was this something that was in existence, or is it something that was built illegally, or part of it, or we don't understand when this back part of it appeared? And my husband has owned that building for, I think, twenty years. He was built, he built his building from scratch. So there was nothing there. So we don't seem to remember what the property next door to us was. And his wall is touching our wall, we think. And we had some issues with the water entering into our building at some point when they did something to their gutters or during a rainy season. So we just want to know that we don't get affected any way with this. And how long has this been there? I don't understand if it's, if it was something that was added or something in existence, I guess it's my question.
Right, sorry.
Is that all? Then.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. We could have staff perhaps address that issue. I'm not aware of what the building's history is. If there's anyone else.
Sorry, let's see if there's any other public comment before we.
Right, okay.
Anyone else? No, okay.
All right, we will close public comment and move on to perhaps building history from staff, and then we will have commissioner comments and discussion.
Right, so thank you for the question. So yes, we did go into the history of, you know, permitting history of the property, and there was an approved plan back in two thousand and twelve. So the structure itself has been in existence for a while. So all that this use permit is seeking is approval for the use. It's not altering the existing structure, which per the permit history was approved with a, with a permit.
Okay, so it's a legal structure, changing use, changing its interior configuration. Does anyone have any comments?
Also part of the conditions of approval under the section for a building permit supplemental requirement is the requirement to submit a drainage plan, so.
Okay, which would include roof drainage, and, yeah, okay, fair enough. Anyone? Nick?
So just to clarify, so the permit was for a commercial structure back in two thousand and twelve, and it was discovered that it had turned into residential, and thus, that's why we have to go through this process. Thank you.
That's correct.
Well, I just have a couple things to say. I think it's fine changing the use, reconfiguring the bedrooms, looking at the previous plan. The bedrooms were not legal in the sense of having light and egress. So this makes two legal bedrooms with egress and light per building code, which is a positive. Likewise, I wish the clients were building more, but, you know, everyone has their own situation, and they want to maintain, I'm sure they want to maintain their own business as it stands, so fair enough. So I support the project and happy to have it approved. Anyone else? Have a motion? Thoughts?
I can move a planning application, P A twenty-five dash zero two-three, five nine nine San Pablo Avenue. Approve it, move approval?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we'll proceed to vote. Commissioner Moaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pilch?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadi?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That motion carries five to zero, so that project has been approved. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to item five dash two, public hearing on Planning and Zoning Commission Resolution two oh two-five dash zero three, amendments to the Planning and Zoning Code regarding bicycle parking. And staff, do you have a presentation?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Ben Matlaw. I'm an Associate Transportation Planner here at the City of Albany. One second to set up. So, just starting off with the staff recommendation, we're hoping that you approve the resolution recommending these amended bike parking requirements and standards to the city council this evening. But going back and reviewing kind of the goals and key changes of the bike parking ordinance and associated standards. So the goals are to align with updates to vehicle parking policies, to support evolving transportation trends, and to advance equity and accessibility. And the key changes of the ordinance are requiring short-term bike parking at some events, applying to more land uses and occupancy type changes, expanding the requirements for e-bikes and cargo bikes, and creating detailed bike parking design standards. And then a background, a little bit of background. So the Planning and Zoning Commission in the spring of two thousand twenty-three recommended off-street vehicle parking ordinance, off-street vehicle parking ordinance update, which was then passed by council in November of two thousand twenty-three, citywide. And as part of that, there was an interest in updating bicycle parking ordinance changes as well. So here we are. So in May of this year, we had a study session with you all. And what we heard from the commission at that study session, this is just a little bit of a recap. We heard that you would want, you wanted us to clarify the definition of secure bike parking, emphasizing that enclosed rooms offer more protection than chain-linked cages, ensuring bike storage accommodates a variety of bike types, particularly cargo and e-bikes, and establish appropriate percentages of space that meet this need, ensuring bike storage areas allow for maneuverability of all types of bicycles, and that access aisles remain unobstructed in those areas. And then applying more robust bike parking standards from the San Pablo area-specific plan, citywide, and extending bike parking requirements to temporary events as well. So per that feedback, as well as a little bit more, we came up with some new, a new bicycle, some changes to the bicycle parking ordinance that align with the various policies in the city. I won't go into these in detail, but we have these in the staff report. The policies align with the general, these are, the ordinance updates align with the general plan, with the active transportation plan, and the climate action and adaptation plan. And without further ado, I'll get into the details of the ordinance changes. So just generally speaking, we kind of broadened the scope of the ordinance, so it applies to additional land uses and consolidate some land uses. And then we've also created a trigger for change in occupancy type. So when there's a change in occupancy type, these ordinance is, these requirements are also required. So this is kind of a, a look at what the previous table of bicycle parking requirements looked like in, in the existing ordinance, excuse me, the existing table. And then this is the proposed table for bicycle parking requirements. And just kind of breaking this down a little bit, what we did here was for residential, we combined residential uses into a single land use type to make it more straightforward. We changed short-term, this short-term space metric for residential from square footage to the number of units. In commercial and public land use type, we also combined the commercial uses to make it more straightforward and added a long-term parking requirement. We added an industrial and manufacturing land use type, in which we suggest that one long-term parking space per ten employees or ten thousand square feet of space should be enacted. We removed retail sales as a land use type, because it was redundant with commercial land use type. And then we added temporary events land use. And just to note here, because it has been brought up, we did this for private property only, and that is because it's our understanding that this, the Planning and Zoning Commission, your purview is for developments, so private developments and, and land that is being developed on, and not public open space or streets. So we kept this to private property for that reason, but recognize this will be a topic of conversation potentially at the commission. So just getting into the weeds a little bit, so for design and location requirements in the ordinance, proposed ordinance update, we increased sidewalk clearance from four to six feet. We allowed, we allowed racks in the public right-of-way with review from the Public Works Director. We make it easier to install racks in the public right-of-way in Solano and San Pablo commercial districts. I would like to also address a comment here. Per the image of the bike-shaped bike racks, there is a comment, a public comment about the standards and how we have a requirement in the standards to install bike racks with square tubes with, that are made of galvanized steel. And the commenter noted that bike-shaped bike racks are neither square-tubed or galvanized steel. And so this was based on some best-practice research, but we recognize that these are longstanding racks in the city, and they've caused few problems. So this is something that we'd be happy to amend and keep as more of a recommendation for best practice without, without mandating it. For large and electric bicycles, we suggest that at least twenty percent of protected spaces have a ten-foot-long ground-level accommodation for cargo bikes, and at least twenty percent of protected spaces have electrical outlets next to the horizontal bicycle parking, and that all rooms have ground-level access. In terms of commuter amenities, projects with greater than fifty employees would have to include showers, lockers, and changing rooms. And notably, this is required for businesses with over fifty employees that undergo a change of occupancy type or a square footage change, because we felt that it was hard to enforce for businesses otherwise. This is kind of when there is a land use change, then the city gets involved. Otherwise, it's, it's hard to enforce from the city's perspective, so that's why we, we did it that way. In terms of temporary events and festivals, we talked about kind of our limited purview as Planning and Zoning Commission, but for these events and festivals, we recommend free monitored bike parking within one block of the event entrance, promotion of the facilities, required in event materials, and parking usage data collection for recurrent events. In terms of the bike parking standards, which you. In terms of the bike parking standards, which you also received, there's this new standalone document in general that covers design, materials, placement, and compliance of bicycle parking facilities, and which we're recommending be mandatory for final project approval. In terms of next steps, we're hoping to get your feedback today, either, you know, providing recommended changes to the ordinance or the standards and, you know, or sending it directly to city council, and then we'll get this to city council at the next available session. But we also wanted to take a final minute just to address AB 306, which was another topic of conversation, and I'm going to pass this off to Leslie to chat about.
Yes, so thanks to Chair McLeod, who brought up a really great question of whether AB 306 will apply to our parking ordinance changes in the zoning ordinance. And for those who don't know, AB 306 was approved at the end of June, and the law would prohibit cities during the, and counties, or cities and counties, from the period between October 1st, 2025, and June 1st of 2031, from implementing changes to the building code as it relates to residential properties. And the idea, residential uses, and the idea is to ensure, well, to kind of promote residential construction, and so that developers know the playing field. So the building code also includes the Green Building, or Cal Green, which does include bicycle standards. So the question is whether our, if we were to change and modify standards relating to residential parking standards, whether that would be legal. We do have that question into our consulting attorneys, and we did not receive an answer yet back, but I will let you know this. As I mentioned, it would, if it does indeed apply to zoning ordinances, if we were to pass this on today, and that's not pressure on any point, we could probably get this approved by city council prior to implementation of, of AB 306. However, if there is a delay in having council approve it, either through continuation here, or a council, or other SNAPU, if indeed the, it does apply to two local zoning ordinances, we would just kind of excise the increase in requirements due to residential parking standards. There would be no need to come back to the planning commissions, and state law supersedes your liability. But just know that whatever the council approves will be based on, on good state legal law, because before it goes to council, we will have that answer. So, so yes, so there's a possibility, if we get it approved, it won't be relevant one way or the other, but before it goes to council, we will know whether any increases that we propose and/or that you or the city council proposes can be indeed implemented. So I hope that answers your question.
I guess I would clarify, from what I've read, it wouldn't be that our ordinances would be illegal, it's that they would have a higher burden of proof, let's say, for the state building code commission to approve it.
Correct. It would have to be based on life and safety, so I don't know that any bicycle parking could meet the standard for life and safety, so I'm gonna say.
Well, it said local conditions.
You're right, it could, but it's.
I mean, there, you could say a climate emergency justifies it. I mean, there's lots of ways whether they, I don't know what they take into account, but.
Correct. So if that is a possibility, and we, if we believe based on our legal advice, that it would apply to our, changes to our local ordinance, and then based on local advice, we could see if we believe that that would meet those special conditions to approve such ordinances, and we would pursue that route. Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
And thank you for.
Sounds like we may have a workaround in any case.
But thank you for raising the issue, it was a great question.
Okay, is there more to your staff report, or is that, that good?
That's it. Tried to keep it brief and, you know, focus on discussion.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have questions for staff before we move to public comment? Yes, Commissioner Moment?
Yeah, I'm.
Commissioner Pearson?
Hello, glad to make the question. Table 6, we are asking for one space per 20.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. Okay, so in table 6, we are asking for one space per 20 units. We have not specified any, like, minimum requirement, so if a building has less than 20 units, would one space be applicable, or zero?
Because we have no minimum requirements, it would be zero.
Okay.
And we intended, yeah, for that, you know, we're, I guess the, to pull back, we're balancing the interest in bicycle parking and also wanting to make, to not hinder development, so thinking about those two things in tandem and how we strike the right balance there. So I think in the notes, we have calculations for the number of required bicycle parking spaces shall be rounded down to the nearest whole number.
That was my, another question, like, if it is rounded down, then for 20 units or 19 units, it would be less than one, and so it would be automatically zero.
That's right.
Yeah, but then rounded down, is the intention, like, if some project has 52 units, would we require just two parking spaces and not three? Typically, wherever we have, you know, any requirement per planning, zoning codes, typically, I have always seen that all the requirements are rounded up, then down. Here we are doing round and down, so just wanted to know if that is intentional and has, you know, any thought process behind it?
Only that we intentionally did it, so as to not burden the smaller.
Okay. Yeah, because one thing I also observed, like, for the exterior, you know, outdoor bike racks, they typically, you know, support two bikes. So, you know, if you are requiring three, you know, they would still have to provide two bike, two racks, and that would be like, you know, so, yeah, just like, you know, how much we need to be precise, we can think about that. And then in section 4.4.b.3, we are asking for direct, ground-level access to street and sidewalk. Does that mean like a direct access to street or sidewalk from the bike room, or bike storage, or can it be, like, because in the standards, we are, you know, making it clear that it can be through a primary building entrance? So depending on that, you know, I think there has to be some coordination between the two. It is not clear in the requirement whether that has to be directly, you know, accessible from the street or sidewalk. It can, I think what I understand is it has to be at ground level, basically, you don't have to climb, but it doesn't have to be accessible from the street exterior side. And then bike standard item 2D, we're asking for three-feet buffer. I'm assuming it is from the front side, is that correct?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Bike standard 2D.
The three feet from walls.
Sizes and clearance, yes. A minimum buffer of three feet from the wall, from walls, or other structures is required to enable proper locking of the frame and one wheel. Is it from the front side or sidewall, basically? Because that is a lot of space, you know, and if it is required from the sidewall, then like, you know, you can imagine like six feet of the room is, you know, just buffer, and that typically is not required. Like, you might have seen the literature, you know, of those, all these bike racks, and they typically like, maximum required is like two feet, and some bike racks require even less than that. So from the front, I think that makes sense, because the bike has a front wheel, so that, you know, they can properly lock it to the rack, but from the side, it, there is no need for that much buffer, so it's better to be clarified where that is measured from.
Can make that clarification.
And then for double-deckers, we are saying, let me go to that item, item 8A of the standards. So there we are saying vertical stacked or bilateral bicycle racks, that is double-decker systems, are permitted for no more than one-third of the required capacity. So what, which of the, you know, bike spaces would be considered for that one-third, that bikes on the top deck, or bikes that are part of the whole system? Because some bike racks, you know, are different, like, they have racks just for the top, the, you know, upper deck, and the lower bike is just free like any other bike. And some bikes rack have like one system that has a kind of a, you know, mounting track for the lower bike as well as upper bike. And so it would be good if it is clarified, like, because that is a big constraint, you know, because bike, double-decker bike racks are, you know, very much in, you know, fashion now, because that saves a lot of space, and like, a lot of cities actually, you know, don't have any restrictions on that. And so if we are saying just one-third of that, and if we are considering both levels of bikes for, in that, then that would be like a very small portion of bike, that would be, you know, that would utilize the double-decking system.
Make that clarification as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yeah, I have two questions. So that, that, the conversation about the Cal Green building standards has had me wondering, are there bike parking regulations associated with the Cal Green building standards? I'm just curious what they are compared to ours, if in fact, like.
So they're less restrictive, and in my interpretation, the only one that would apply to residential parking, because the other standards apply to, they keep referencing tenants, which to me is synonymous with, this is the wrong page, with commercial space, and maybe I didn't bring the correct page. Let me take a look. I may not have printed out the correct, but it is based on a percentage of, of visitors, which I think is a very tricky standard to figure out how many visitors, and I think it's 20% of visitors. I can look that up if you'd like the, the specific, because somehow I got the second half of my printout. So I will look that up, but it's very limited. There is a, kind of a preface clause before they go into the standards that say, projects must comply with these standards or the local ordinance, whichever is stricter. So I would like to think that that would allow us to move forward with stricter regulations, but again, we'll, oops, excuse me, we will wait for the determination from our city attorney.
You know, I have seen one, I think I read, pretty sure I read, it was half-space per unit bike parking, point five per unit, is what I read in Cal Green, so.
It says, if the new project. If the new project or an addition or alteration is anticipated to generate visitor traffic, provide permanently anchored bicycle racks within 200 feet of the visitor's entrance, readily visible to passerby for 5% of new visitor motorized vehicle parking spaces being added, with a minimum of one, two-bike capacity rack, is what it says.
Okay.
That's pretty, pretty confusing.
Exactly, so.
What do we need that for?
Exactly, so I'm, I'm hoping we can move forward with our own regulations.
Okay.
So second question that I have is, when you talk about the number of protected bike spaces per employee, how are you defining employee? Is it a part-time employee, full-time employee, is it employees over the course of the previous year? I'm just curious if you've thought about that definition.
We can clarify that as well. My intention was full-time employee, but I hadn't considered the timeline that that employee would be employed.
Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking about, like, a lot of, a lot of shops on San Pablo, and the grocery stores have a lot of part-time workers, and so, you know, your calculations, I'm not sure what your aim, you know, depends what we're aiming for here.
And when we get to deliberation, I would love to hear if you have thoughts or best practices that work in, you know, the communities that you work in or visit, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Other questions? Is that all? Yeah?
I just have, I just have one. So allowing racks in the public right-of-way, I didn't quite understand that. The, I guess the, the city is always allowed to put racks in the public right-of-way, is this, does this mean private installation of a rack in the public right-of-way is explicitly allowed now, is that it? Okay.
For short-term parking, that would be the intention.
Okay, gotcha.
And may I clarify, currently, our code allows that for, for properties on San Pablo and Solano, so this would just expand that to other.
Oh, I see. Gotcha. Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's it.
Commissioner, what do you have? No? I don't, I guess my one question regarding jurisdiction or purview over public spaces, parks, et cetera, events, private events on public space, quasi-public-private, dinner with Albany, I mean, all these things, Solano stroll, other events at the park. So who does, which body does have jurisdiction over that?
So I'll answer that question. So the zoning ordinance is only for private property. So when something goes on the public right-of-way, which would include like, Solano stroll, I think that's the biggest one, it is the Public Works Department, it is actually a special events permit, that's sort of a jointly issued through community development and public works, but it is not through authorization or a process that is identified into the zoning ordinance. Now, parks tend to be, you know, they're not the public right-of-way, however, programming in parks is typically, most jurisdictions done through the Parks Department, which is our community service and recreation department here. Again, since our department, community development, tends to have a little more experience in actually issuing permits and conditions of approval, we often work in tandem with them. So if we wanted to, if you wanted to make suggestions regarding parking for events not on private property, we can maybe incorporate them in some of our standards, but we would not be incorporating them into the zoning ordinance, because that's just not, the zoning ordinance doesn't have authorization over that.
So that, for me, is still kind of clear as mud. Yeah, so it's not the Transportation Commission, it's not the Parks and Recs Commission, it's not city council, it's the Public Works Department.
Correct. There are some permits that do get brought before city council, but, and I'm not sure if the Solano stroll, I think it's kind of a regular permit that's issued, but it could always be brought up by the city council for review and decision too, especially if there's, you know, a first time and/or if there's issues with an ongoing project.
Yeah, I guess I would like to explore some kind of standard, or, you know, figure out how that would happen, or, you know, that would apply to all events, and not just private events on private property, but, you know, the ones that really generate traffic, for example. Okay, well, that was it for me. Do you have another question?
Yeah, I realized I did have one more. It was about the material for bike racks, the square material, I understand is for, deters sawing more. And then what was, what were the reasons you discovered that you recommended galvanized or stainless, I think, whatever it was, and not, and not powder-coated?
The, I think it was mostly a maintenance issue, so galvanized just requires less maintenance.
Okay. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Actually, I have one more question. Yeah. What governs our public buildings for these standards? What governs our public buildings for these standards?
I'm sorry, I missed that?
What governs our public buildings for bicycle parking standards or all parking standards?
The zoning ordinance does, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, let's see, why don't we move to...
Well, I am going to follow up on that. So I didn't, did I miss the category of public in the list of categories? Is residential, commercial?
No, it's, it's in there, so...
It's in there, public is in there, okay.
And with the caveat that, I think you're all aware, but this would not apply to the school district, it would not apply to UC, and it doesn't apply to anything under BART or the federal, the agricultural center there. So unless it's a separate entity, you know, under a different jurisdiction.
Okay.
Perhaps say city public buildings or something.
Correct, yeah, so.
All public buildings, state agriculture department or whatever. Okay. Why don't we move to public comment, closed question? And is there anyone in the room would like to make a public comment? Yes, please, come to the lectern. And you will have three minutes.
Okay, I'm going to talk fast. I live in El Cerrito, actually. I'm really kind of interested in seeing what you guys are doing here in Albany in terms of updating your bike parking standards, since we need to do that and we've had this discussion some time ago and got distracted by other bike issues. But it's interesting, I live in a multi-unit building in, on San Pablo Avenue, four-story condominium building right across the street from El Cerrito Natural Food Store, just south of there. And my wife and I both don't have a car, we just have a couple of electric bikes. And we have a bike room in the building, and that's one of the reasons why we're attracted to that building. But the building, that bike room has been broken into twice. So, and my wife and I, our electric bikes were stolen first time, and the second time other people's bikes, expensive bikes were stolen. So made us very aware that it's not just enough to mandate that multifamily housing have a bike room. There really has to be certain standards associated with bike rooms and that they, I mean, recently, the HOA actually installed steel frame and door onto the, onto the room, because we suddenly realized that was necessary. And a self-driving, self-closing door, because a lot of people are going in and forgetting to actually latch the door after they left. And there's other things like, you know, making sure that these rooms are fire-safe from, you know, lithium-ion battery fires. And also, I noticed that you all are going for, what, 20% for e-bike parking in facilities? That seems really low from our experience. Commissioner Moeman, you talked about the two-layer bike racks, a lot of the new bike racks now actually have, can accommodate wider, heavier bikes in the lower level, wider, fatter tires, so that should be considered. You can really up the number of electric bikes you can park if you go towards that approach. And we just have a bunch of wall-mounted racks in our bike room, 20 of them, and we have one inverted floor-mounted rack, which isn't working out. So just be aware that that's really something that's going to be important going forward, especially as e-bikes get more and more popular. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the room? No? Anyone online who would like to speak on this subject?
Hi, my name is Ken McCroskey, and I'm representing myself and the Albany Strollers and Rollers. We thank you for considering bike parking. It's an important issue. And due to the potential for a freeze in regulations due to AB 306, we'd like to recommend that you focus on editing the ordinance and passing, recommending that on to the City Council, and then perhaps also editing the, sorry, the standards, but bring that back for another pass. We suggest you increase the numbers of bikes parked, bike parking required, and also consider in the standards, including events on public property. Our recommendations for the ordinance includes wording clarifications, expanding, exempting protected bike spaces from far calculations in order to give developers a leg up on maintaining the number of units that they can build out and making that more attractive, and increasing the number of electrical connections available next to bike racks. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else?
Please use the raise the hand icon if you'd like to speak. No, and I think you all received the, we've received a few more comments, public comments via email, so they were sent to you directly, and they're also available on our webpage, public hearing.
Right, there were some letters received, which I read. Okay, well, we will close public comment and move on to commissioner discussions. Anyone like to start? Or, shall I start? Okay, well, I'll jump off. Yeah, thank you, staff, for bringing this. I really appreciate trying to move this forward. You know, my initial thought is that it's really not that different from what we already have, so I was a bit disappointed in that and think we should be going further in general. And in the normal course of things, I would have just called this a first reading and not, you know, go straight to council. So I think it needs improvement. I think there are a lot of ways we can do that. And I think, for me, the crux of it is the numbers of spaces required per unit or per bedroom, and I think we should increase that from one, definitely. You know, and a lot of other thoughts about other things. You know, not to go too much into the weeds, but the big picture is, you know, and I did appreciate the resolution, which listed a lot of reasons why we are doing this. So, you know, I think it does bear repeating. Goal one, decrease passenger vehicle miles traveled through alternative modes, and expand and enhance bicycle infrastructure throughout the city. I think that's absolutely right. I think what, the main, the main issue here is that we're going to be creating more housing, it's coming. And if we don't do that with alternative modes of transportation in mind, what we're going to get is a lot of overflow car parking. So we have a choice here. Either we make much more robust bicycle parking that will give people options and get people out of their cars, or we're going to have a much worse parking problem on our streets with overflow parking, and several comments have come through about that. We've reduced, well, we have eliminated a parking minimum, so the trade-off for that is that we would replace some of those parking spaces with bicycle rooms, bicycle parking rooms. And I think the idea there is that not, it's not going to be a deal killer to require more bicycle parking for developers. It's not even really going to be a hindrance, because they could take what they were going to build for parking, car parking, and use it instead for bike parking. And in bike parking, we get so many more numbers of bikes than we would get vehicles. So the idea is that it's a trade-off. The developers are getting something by no parking minimums, but they have to give something back in terms of bike parking, which meets a lot of our other goals, which are very, very important. And that's also in the resolution. You know, there's so many good reasons in line in item two. Accessible and secure bicycle parking directly supports cycling as a viable mode of transportation, increasing physical activity and health of cyclists, which I would call residents. Shift from automobile use to cycling facilitated by convenient bike parking decreases vehicle emissions, improving air quality. You know, so many great things stem from shifting from mode shift to bikes. So I don't think we are, by creating a more robust bike room, bike parking standard, I don't think we're going to be hindering development. And I think, as one of our commenter said, it attracts a certain kind of resident also who wants to bike, who comes here without wanting to use a car, and we should be supporting those people, because that adds to our resiliency and sustainability. You know, and it does go hand-in-hand with, you know, as it was said, enhanced bicycle facilities, prioritize low-stress facilities to encourage ridership. Well, that moves on to the ATP, Active Transportation Plan, creating a real network of protected bike lanes. And the bike rooms are one piece of that, and I would say a really key piece of that, because if you don't have somewhere secure to park your bike, you're not going to ride your bike on the protected bike lane. So it's like part of a whole network, and it's the endpoint. Whereas the bike network out in the city gets you where you want to go and you come back. So it facilitates all of that. So I think for all these reasons, I'm really, I would really say we should require more spaces. I would propose one per bedroom, is what Berkeley does. Emeryville is close, it's one space per one-bedroom, two spaces per two-bedroom. But if we had one per bedroom, I think it's safe, you know, it's, it's, I don't think that's overly burdensome either. And I know Portland was mentioned last meeting, but I think what was objected to most there were required bike parking alcoves inside apartments, which took up a lot of space and really did make fewer units possible. I mean, if you ask developers, you know, what the objective, it's anything that costs them money, whatever it is. So, you know, it's almost not fair poll to say to developers, what don't you like? They're not going to like anything that costs them money or leads to fewer units. But we are allowing developers to make a lot fewer units by not requiring so much car parking, and that's kind of the trade-off, and that's why we're here talking about bike parking as well. So that's the big picture, as far as I'm concerned. There are a lot of little things I think we should clean up, but perhaps I'll let some others speak first. Does anybody else like to speak?
I can speak. So I, actually, I like the standards that you've proposed. I do have a couple question, a couple suggestions, though. So for 2B applicability, changes of occupancy types, you proposed one space per multifamily residential. Does multifamily residential include duplexes and triplexes, or is it like four or five units and more?
It's three or more units.
Three or more units, yeah. I mean, I, I think that, so 2A, I think, talks about the requirement for new floor area for new construction, and I agree, I totally agree with that. I think it's important when, you know, when you're building new spaces to provide for these parking areas. But I think when there are changes of occupancy type, you're putting a lot of constraints on existing buildings. If you're not changing the footprint, like, you know, if you look at today's example, which I know is like, you know, you went from commercial to live, or live-work, but let's say it was converted into a duplex. Like, there's no room or a triplex, there would, like, you would have to be taking space away from living space for bike parking. And I think that what, you know, in the past 10 years, we've been working towards removing parking regulations, automobile parking regulations, because what we realized is that, is that parking increases the cost of housing, whether it's bike parking or car parking, car parking. But, you know, your example for, you know, when saying that like the car parking, if we exchange car parking for bike parking, well, then we're not going to be reducing the cost of housing, because developers are still going to have to be providing that space. So, so I would, I, that's why I say that I'm happy with these levels of parking, because we're testing to see if it makes sense. Like, right now, the greatest need is housing. And although, like, I think biking is a wonderful way of traveling, I've been a bike commuter for 30 years, like, I, you know, I think it's really important. I think when it comes to protected bike parking in interiors of projects, that it can be expensive and it can take away from, from space that could go towards housing. So, so I would recommend that for 2B applicability, changes of occupancy type, that, you know, I guess you say that's three units or more changes. I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know if I would say 10 units or more, I just, I don't think that, I don't think when there's a change of, I don't think when there's a change of use and not a change of the building envelope that we should be requiring protected bike parking. So that's my first, my first comment. My second comment has to do with the, some more of the standards for protected bike spacing, and you pointed this out, where must be directly accessible, this is B2II, must be directly accessible by bike through primary building entrances, I think that's too restrictive. We don't know what these building configurations are going to be, and if it's accessible through a side entrance, that may make more sense and have less conflicts with the folks who are actually entering through the primary, the primary entrance. So, I mean, I think it's important for us to have flexibility in these regulations. I think it's important for us to put something forward that's, you know, comparable to, you know, what some of the other cities are doing. I'll say, I work for the city Berkeley, I'm the one that worked on the parking regulations that proposed the, what was accepted for one bike parking space per bedroom, and we did, like, we haven't done a formal utilization study, but anecdotally, we are finding that those bike parking spaces in downtown Berkeley are not occupied. And so I would love to see a utilization study before we implement regulations that say one bike parking space per bedroom.
So, sorry, could you tell me the, what part of the document you were referencing, the last part about opening onto a street versus an alley?
So it was protected bicycle spaces, and I think this was in the guideline, is it the guidelines?
Guidelines.
The standards, yeah. And so it's section B2II, protected bike spaces.
It's mentioning both part documents, it's in the main record document, section 4B3, and it is also mentioning the standards, section 1B2. There is discrepancy.
Thanks.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I just, in summary, I think we need to, you know, we need to provide flexibility to see if these regulations make sense, and I think it's important to have, I think it's important to have protected bike space, bike parking, and on-street bike parking, but not at the expense of, not at the expense of housing.
Well, are you finding that housing is not happening because of these bike regulations? I mean, that would, I mean, I see lots of buildings going up in Berkeley, and I can't imagine that bike rooms are a deal killer by any means. And I do understand the trade-off between, or, yes, bike rooms cost money, obviously, but we've changed our standards to have no minimum parking, car parking requirements, so it's quite easy to offset the money that would be spent on, I don't know, five parking spaces that cost $50,000 each or so, to then construct bike rooms that, let's say, five parking spaces, five vehicles that could accommodate 50 or 60 bike spaces. So, you know, for me, it's really a no-brainer. It's like you get bang for your buck, is kind of what I'm seeing. And it facilitates our other goals for climate action, active transportation, reducing car parking demand from overflow car parking if residents don't have an option to ride their bikes. That's really the big picture that I see. So, you know, when we have approved the Berkeley, or the Albany Bowl project, a lot of residents are very worried that there will be overflow car parking in their neighborhood. And what we're trying to do with more robust bike parking would be to reduce that as a problem, or head it off at the pass, sort of thing. So that's my thinking. So that's my thinking, that's what, you know, the way I look at it.
Yeah, no, I mean, I understand that. I also think that, you know, the Albany Bowl project is located on Highway 123, you know, San Pablo Avenue, there are multiple buses that run that way, and so not everybody's going to be riding bicycles. Like, there are other modes, when you talk about mode shift, it's not only to bicycles. And so, you know, people are using scooters, which may not need as big of a space. Like, there are a lot more people using electric scooters. I mean, I, I was, I said for new development, I think it's important to have protected bike parking, and I think it's, you know, it makes sense at one space per unit. For change of use, change of occupancy type, I do not think it makes sense for residential projects. Those are, you know, I guess, I don't know if I was clear on that distinction.
I would actually add another category, which would be modifications that create, for an existing building that qualifies as new construction. I do get it about occupancy type, because physical structure of the building is not necessarily changing much, or at all, perhaps. Although, you know, looking at the project we had earlier, I forgot to ask them about where's their bike parking, we should have asked that, that should have been part of their presentation, but it wasn't included, and they had, they had space outdoors, it could easily have accommodated two, three bikes. So, you know, we have certain triggers that things qualify as new construction when they are modified. I don't know, it's 50%, more than 50% of the floor area modified, you know, that triggers other things for new construction, such as fire sprinklers, that could also trigger bike requirements. So I would add a third category to that. Anyone else have something to say, or discussions?
I have a few discussions.
Okay.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead. Yeah, so, you know, I had suggested, you know, a kind of a strategy in our previous meeting, where I had, I thought the, you know, the reduced parking requirement could be linked with bike parking requirement, since we have, you know, what we have proposed here, like, one bike parking per unit might be okay if there is also vehicular parking in the same building. But let's say there is a project which has reduced parking or zero parking, would one bike per unit work? It may not. So I was thinking, like, there could be some kind of strategy where there is maximum one vehicular parking per unit and minimum one bike parking per unit. That's like our, you know, typical condition. But if a project reduces their vehicular parking by 50%, should we ask them to provide more bike parking? If a project removes the vehicular parking completely, should we ask them to increase bike parking even more? That would reduce some pressure, you know, from the, for the residents, because they don't have car parking, but at least they have more bike parking, so they can use bikes more, and that would, you know, kind of balance it out. And so I have also seen situations where the developers have provided one-to-one bike parking, and they are not fully utilized, and bikes, bike rooms are, you know, empty. Those are situations, you know, it depends, like, where it happens. So some flexibility, I think, would be useful, and, you know, we can always have opportunity to upgrade this code, hopefully, you know. So if we need more, but at least if we can link it with reduced parking, that could give us some opportunity to add more bike parking when there is reduced vehicular parking. It would be some kind of, you know, I don't know how the code language would work, but there has to be some kind of gradation system, and it could be tricky to, you know, enforce that or monitor that.
I guess they don't see the clear trade-off or the clear linkage?
The clear, clear trade-off, like, you know, you have one-to-one bike parking now, one-to-one, one, maximum one car parking per unit. And for, let's say, you know, affordable housing, they typically would not provide any car parking. But in that case, would we be okay with just one bike parking per unit? Because that would be, you know, not enough, you know, mode of transportation for residents. And so if we ask for, in return for not providing any vehicular parking, if we ask for additional bike parking, then that would make, you know, some compensation. And it is also kind of a trade-off, like, because as you said, you know, a vehicular parking costs, like, you know, anything about $30,000 of space, depending on what kind of structure it is, you know, below ground would be like $80,000, above ground, type one construction, maybe more, type five construction, maybe a little less. Bike room is much cheaper, and as you said, you know, within a space where, you know, requires for a car parking, we can accommodate maybe 20 bikes. So it is not comparable in terms of cost, but saving, when they reduce parking, that saving is much more than they would have to provide, they would have to spend on the additional bike parking. And so it would be always, you know, beneficial for them and as well as the residents when they don't provide any bike parking.
A bit of a sliding scale.
Exactly.
Well, we have had projects that came to, we had the one on, what was it? No parking on, oh, what is it, not Carmel, was it? Or, no, no, it was one of the other streets up there, that had no car parking, essentially, but it had a pretty good bike room. So, yeah, I still think there should be a higher minimum, but...
Previously, you know, when there was no maximum vehicular parking required, you know, there used to be TDM systems, and TDM used to, you know, require developers to provide more bike parking in lieu of reduction in the vehicular parking. So it's basically the same system where you can reduce the parking number, it is their choice to reduce the parking, vehicular parking, but we can ask for additional parking, bike parking in return for that.
I guess regarding utilization, that's an interesting question. I mean, a lot of, I mean, when I was reading about our car parking standards, there were a lot of studies that showed that even car parking was underutilized, which is one of the reasons we go to, went to no required minimums, because we let developers judge will be appropriate. But I think in terms of bike parking, I think we're looking towards the future and mode shift that is coming, that will come, because our bike networks will get built out. You have to say that right now, our bike networks are very poor, generally speaking, and that there are, I mean, I just read a study the other day that says, as you build out your protected bike network, ridership goes up, very linear, very clear correlation. So it's sort of preparing for this other future, I think, that we're also doing. So having some vision, seeing what's coming, getting ready for it now, because once a building's built, it's not going to change, it's not going to, I mean, you could conceivably change car parking spaces to bike parking spaces, but the likelihood is pretty slim. So I think having more robust parking requirements now would be beneficial for the future, so looking forward. Got any comments, or are you done? You have more?
I'm done.
Yeah?
So, safe bike rooms, I agree with the comments about that, they do, there is a, something that was in the standard, brought over from the San Pablo specific plan, about the bike room opening onto the street, and actually, that could be problematic in terms of safety if you don't have some sort of vestibule, you know, double, a double door. So I'm not sure we should require that, but we should, but whatever we can do to emphasize the, the safety from theft. And the other thing is, you know, bike rooms, I think, are more, are probably easier, perhaps cheaper to build than individual lockers, but I sure enjoy my individual locker when I go to the Bart station, and then I feel my bike is totally safe. I have used bike rooms, shared bike rooms, such as in Berkeley, where I had a light taken off my bike, and I just don't feel quite as safe parking my bike in a, in a room. It might be better if it's not a public room, but a more, a room in my building, but still, if we, if a developer wanted to build individual lockers for bikes, I, I think that would be great. So, anyway, stressing the safety of, of the, the bike parking. This good point about must be directly accessible by bike through the primary building entrance, I think that's the language you were referencing. And, yeah, I'm not actually sure why that language is there, and there's also a language that says the bike room must also, must open out onto the street or sidewalk. So, yeah, I don't, just like you wouldn't drive your car necessarily through the primary building entrance, you know, why would you, why should you need to have, bring your bicycle in there if there's a door to the bike room, which is equally accessible? So, yeah, I question that. Not, although I can see the, I can see the advantages in what you are talking about, Commissioner Moeman, I don't, I wouldn't want it ever to be that developers would choose to have more car parking because they could have less bike parking. So that, they probably wouldn't do that, but that wouldn't quite make sense, but still, I think I'm more in line with our chair that I just want to make sure we have a lot, we want to induce the demand, we want to show people, there's plenty of bike parking, so there's no reason you shouldn't buy a bike and use a bike. So, not so sure about your idea. I agree that more e-bike accommodation might be necessary, that more than 20%, maybe it should be 40%. I see so many e-bikes around these days. In terms of the buffer language, whether it's three feet from the end or the side, I think it's okay, because my situation, my, my, what I encounter more often is racks that have, don't have enough space, and my bike can't fit all the way in, or I can't maneuver around, so I, I'm not in favor of changing that buffer language. In terms of rack composition, yeah, I can, I don't, I'm not, I guess I don't have a problem with that, because you're not, the language doesn't say, doesn't prohibit a powder coating, it just discourages it. I'd love to see them rubber coated, frankly, because would you ever take, drive your car and then place it against a metal structure to park it? No, it would be insane, you don't want to scratch your car, so why should you scratch your bike? I, I've always been surprised that bike racks aren't by default rubber coated. The, about showers, lockers and showers, it's interesting, I'm not sure, given the prevalence of e-bikes, I'm not sure how much showers matter that much anymore. I'd love to hear from my fellow commissioners about that, but I, not, that's not to say I want to change the language, but it might be something we want to think about. But I did see the language that said equivalent private all-gender unisex facilities may be provided in place of gender-specific showers. I would like to propose that we have language that says at least one all-gender unisex facility must be provided, so that there'd be one stall or one enclosure, one room where anyone, any sex, any gender can use. So that would be my preference. And finally, oh, not finally, a couple more things. I guess, let me make one more statement, then I have two questions for staff. The other statement is, I, I don't think it's a huge burden that developers set aside space for bicycles, considering, just as you said, how much space vehicle parking, motor vehicle parking takes. So first question for staff, is the, will this ordinance be presented to either the Transportation Commission or the Climate Action Committee?
No.
Okay, and I think it should be. And the one short-term space per 100 attendees for events to exceed 1,000 attendees language, were you thinking of something like Foodie Land? Was that the, the example that came to mind? Okay. Yeah, Foodie Land is a, when I attended the one, once Foodie Land, that was a, what do they call that? Carmageddon, yeah, the, I couldn't even get, it's hard to imagine how you could maneuver there as pedestrian or bicyclists. Anyway, one per 100 attendees probably makes sense for Foodie Land, I'm not sure that makes sense for all events. One per 100, that's very low, I'd rather see that increased to maybe one per 10, or I, I don't know what the number would be, but one per 100 seems way too low. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wadi, something to add?
I don't have a lot of additional comment to add, but I do very much agree with the comments that Commissioner Pearson mentioned, especially the change of occupancy or the change of use, effectively, when there's not a change to the building. I don't think that's reasonable to accept, expect people, especially given some of the very constrained buildings that we have in Albany. We have a lot of buildings that are tiny, narrow, commercial spaces, plenty of spaces that are just tough, that they're tough to figure out how to accommodate a successful building, floor plate, as well as accommodate all of the new bike infrastructure. So I think that's very reasonable to exempt. And again, the other comments that Commissioner Pearson mentioned, I agree with as well. I will just say, it's sort of to the, the broader comment of, you know, have, have we seen projects that haven't happened because of bike parking? I think it's just helpful to keep in perspective, it may not be just bike parking, but it's sort of death by 1,000 cuts, and all of these requirements do add costs to developers' proformas. And yes, it may not be this one, but are we willing to sacrifice other obligations if this one's so important to us? Because there is a point where all of these requirements added together make projects infeasible, and often none of them are the one reason why a project is not feasible, but it's the totality of all of them. So I think it's important to keep that in consideration, that, you know, if this is the most important thing, that is sort of a community benefit or a feature that we think is really important, but maybe it can't be this and all-electric and, you know, X, Y, and Z requirements, you know, material choice and, you know, landscaping and all, you know, it's all of those things added up that add costs to a project. So I just, I think that's important for us to keep in mind when we're thinking about, you know, each new obligation that we put onto a development project. But that's sort of my broader two cents on the issue, but otherwise, I'm supportive of the amendments that Commissioner Pearson recommended.
Okay.
Can I, can I just add, I'm also, I would be amenable to the removal of the, was it change in use that you were talking about, the, the requirements being put into place?
Yeah, it'd be applicability, under applicability, it would be 2B, any existing building undergoing change of occupancy type that results in a classification as commercial. Also, when you talked about the commuter amenities, those are also being applied to changes of use, which I think is problematic as well. A new building, it's different, but a business, that says commuter amenities, all businesses with more than 50 employees located in buildings undergoing a change of occupancy type or square footage, like, that's not quite clear, or adding new square footage, but I think that that change of occupancy type may be problematic in that section as well.
Okay, yeah, I'm amenable to that changing. I will say, though, I am, I forgot my, I buried the lead, the one thing that I did want to say is I am in, I act, I still am in favor of one per bedroom, rather than one per building unit, because building unit can be anything, can, can be a very large building with many residents, so one per bedroom makes a lot more sense. And that's not even necessarily one per person, because a couple might be occupying one bedroom, so. So that would be my preference.
The one other thing I wanted to comment on was, was the recommendation from a member of the public who asked that the bike rooms not be counted in FAR. And I thought that that was a good addition, if we wanted to provide, you know, some relief to developers who are providing a protected bike space indoors.
I think that's a great idea. Yeah, I would support that. Because, I mean, going back to our other discussions about specific plan for San Pablo, FAR does limit numbers of units and numbers of residences possible. And I think, just an aside, we should get rid of the FAR altogether to help boost housing, which would have a much greater effect than, you know, whatever this perceived cost of a bike room would be.
Remove one of the cuts.
It would be our trade-off, plus ask more bike rooms, less, you know, no FAR restrictions. But I think as a short-term thing, not counting it towards FAR actually allows more units to be built in lieu of that space. So you don't really lose any units for that. And going back to Commissioner Pilch's comment about one per unit, what if you have a whole building of three-bedroom apartments? Okay, then it seems like you're way over, your domain, your supply of bike spaces would be way under what would really be used or needed. So I really think it's just kind of fair to do it per bedroom, because, you know, that's where people live. And that's, it's by numbers, it's really not by units, it's by numbers of people in the building that it makes sense to have bike parking. You know, even in a one-bedroom apartment, you're gonna have two people easily. How many bikes would you have? I have five bikes, I don't know. I'm gonna get another one.
So if you, if I may.
We need to figure out.
Yeah, so I'm gonna focus on the ordinance portion of it. And I'd like to sort of summarize parts where I heard perhaps consensus, or perhaps lack thereof. And then maybe there could be a little bit of a straw poll. I think that might make more sense as we go along, instead of making a motion and having it be denied. The first is regarding change of occupancy type. And it seems to me that that should be, there may be consensus that that, that should not apply for triggering bicycle parking either in the standards or in the ordinance. I think I heard almost unanimous on that. There is somewhat, we didn't all discuss it, but another topic is removing bicycle parking having it be from FAR coverage, which would be in line with what we do for vehicle parking. So it seems to be in line of what we do. A suggestion, I mean, it came up through your comments, but it's a suggestion on my end, is that there is a section in the additional requirements for three that was just moved directly from the San Pablo specific plan that was already in the ordinance to apply citywide. However, that is the part about that says that any bicycle room provided should have at-grade ground-level access to the street or sidewalk. It seems to me like we need to discuss that, but I recommend excising that section from the ordinance and putting it into the standards, because it's more of a design standard than something that should be codified in the ordinance.
Really quick question on that. Would that, for example, if this was applying to like a residential property that has like a side yard or a side driveway, and they wanted to access instead of through the building, but, you know, from some sort of side entry, the solution would help sort of remediate that potential conflict?
Yeah, and it also sounded like it was a little unclear what it meant. And so having something unclear in the ordinance makes me very unhappy.
Exactly, yeah. I think there should be flexibility on that, yeah.
Yeah. So those are, and that would also, when we go back to the standards, kind of look again at primary entrances and some of the other comments that were made. Now, to the parts that weren't as, is the number of parking spaces. So where I didn't hear much agreement are really related to the protected bicycle space for residential multifamily. Whether that should be kept as is, which is one space per resident, whether that should be on a per-bedroom space, either, you know, one per bedroom or one, maybe like for up to one bedroom, two for up to three, whatever that is. There is also an idea of tying it to the provision of bicycle, of vehicle parking. And then there was also, not related to residential, a change in perhaps temporary events and the number of bicycle spaces required for a temporary event. And another thing that wasn't brought up, but currently, we have proposed one short-term space per 100 attendees for an event expected to exceed 1,000 attendees. So when you look at it, if, it's not just always the number provided, but what is the trigger for providing it? So, you know, do we want 10 for 1,000? But if you have 900, it's zero, so just a thought. So with that, I, I would like maybe you all to start with the residential protected bicycle parking space. And if you come to a sort of straw poll consensus, maybe just go with a motion about, as we move forward.
Well, it sounds like there's two of us who are one per bedroom, but maybe not, maybe only two, or Commissioner Moment?
No, I'll go with one per unit.
One per?
Unit.
Oh, one per unit?
Yeah.
I think we've got three votes for one per unit.
How about 1.5?
People can always voluntarily provide more bike, my parking spaces.
The temporary events one, it was one that we lifted from nearby cities. We actually did make it a little bit more stringent, meaning providing more bicycle parking, but it's, you all go to more temporary events in the city of Albany than I do, so I'd, I would like you to hear.
Yeah, I was looking for guidelines for this. So I was wondering, like, where did one for, you know, one per 100 come from? I mean, that's 1%, right? I mean, are we really thinking only 1% of people at these events bike to these things? 10% would be better, or, I mean?
So how about less than 1,000 is, so none are required? Is that what that means?
Correct.
Okay.
As currently written.
Okay.
Quick question, how many events, I mean, obviously Foodie Land is like one that's obviously over. Other than Foodie Land, what other events are there in Albany that we think are over 1,000?
On private?
Almost none.
On private land, I think.
On private land?
Yeah, so not at, not at, you know, Memorial Park. It's just at the racetrack, pretty much, right?
Yeah.
And that could come back, but we don't know. I mean, under what form?
I mean, I think if it's, if the only facility that really ever hosts things of that scale in Albany are the racetrack, and we know those are probably going to be fairly large events, I think that's a reasonable threshold.
And that's permitted separately, right? We always?
Exactly. They always need a special use permit anyhow.
And you did say, you didn't pick that out of thin air. You did say you got that from neighboring cities.
So as I, as I recall, the examples that Chair McLeod shared with us, one of the examples was from Oakland, one was from San Francisco. And it was something to the effect of one per 200 attendees, or one per 500 attendees. Those were the two examples provided. I would note that, you know, whatever we create here as the Planning and Zoning Commission, if this does end up going to some other entity to consider, and for public events, then they'll probably use what's happened here. So I don't think what we do here will be for naught if we're only applying it to private property, because it would potentially be duplicated. So it's worth considering, but the events, private events in the cities that you provided examples of were, were much less strict than we're talking about tonight.
The big problem at Foodie Land was the lack of standards. I mean, they really had very difficult accessibility to the racks, they had the wrong kind of racks, they weren't monitored, you know, I mean, it was endlessly frustrating. I mean, they had cars backing up right, parked right to the back of the bike racks. You know, one of those events. So, you know, the standards need to apply to those special use permits, and we didn't really have those in force. So, yeah, where else would this apply? I don't know, there's really not enough spacing for 1,000 people.
Standards can be written into the standards document. Yeah, I assume you have special standards for temporary use that would be different?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they have to be adopted into that use permit or special use permit. All right.
There was one more that I heard, which was a request under four, what is currently four B2, to increase the number of required protected bicycle spaces that have electrical, electrical sockets accessible to the spaces up from 20 to 40%.
I would support that. I think, you know, e-bikes are the future of urban transportation. And you see it, you know, while these parents and kids going around on their e-bikes and, you know, I think the cargo bike, the e-bike is replacing a car. And I think that's why we should have more robust standards. And I'd also say, you know, we should have more protected, let's see, more large bike spaces, 40% and 50% charging capacity. You know, it's not that expensive to put in more outlets in a room, really not.
Yeah, I would also support that. And a lot of these new racks actually come with outlets. You don't have to put them in the wall or floor.
Right, right. But if it's just, you know, just metal posts or whatever, the racks, they don't necessarily come, you know, with outlets, but.
Sorry, could you repeat that again?
Oh, just saying.
And you're looking at the ordinance, right?
Correct, it is.
Yes, the ordinance, I would say 40% for large bikes and 50% for electrical socket access.
And Commissioner Moment, you're, you're amenable to that?
Yeah.
I'll go along with that, too.
And I had one other thought about bike racks. There should be some that are not allowed, like ones that, you know, the grill type should not be allowed. And there should be some that.
What's a grill type?
It's just the straight bar with the vertical bars. Oftentimes, they're too narrow for a larger wheel for a cargo bike, or, you know. Or you only lock one wheel and the bike twists, the wheel bends, or, you can only lock the wheel and you come back and your wheel's still there, but the rest of your bike's gone. You know?
I think one of the, one of the standards has clarified that.
Yeah, so I think we, maybe illustrations would help to, you know, not allow it. It's not the only kind, the sort of the wave ones aren't really recommended. I mean, there's other things that could be added to, you know, make things better. What about when there is new, not new construction, but a remodel that qualifies as new construction? I mean, in that case, you are changing the building.
I'm not, I have to say, I'm not exactly clear what that situation is.
Well, it's either an addition of more than 50%, let's say. I know there are other triggers, and, you know, let's say an addition to a building that adds more than 50%. Or sometime, I mean, it's, new construction sometimes is considered when you're remodeling over 50% of the footprint, although that doesn't necessarily mean expanding the building. But let's say large additions could trigger it. Because at that point, you are changing the structure and creating new spaces, and you could accommodate new uses, or new, new facilities. I think.
So that is not, that, that's not technically new construction, but you want to make it be, these, 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 these standards be triggered by that?
Yeah, well, let's say, let's say this project that came here earlier, if they expanded their footprint or their building by 50% or 100%, which they could have done, then they could, you know, it's, it's not new construction per se, it's an addition to an existing building, but it's increasing its size and they're spending a lot of money. Why would that be exempt from these standards at that point, when you're able to?
Well, I mean, in that case, if it was commercial going to a three-unit residential, that goes back to the point of, you know, what Commissioner Wadi was saying, that like, it's, it's a, you know, it's an added expense that is going to like take away from what possibly could be provided, otherwise, like.
She said it's, yeah, as a community benefit, it's a value question or a policy question. And it would be worth it, as for policy trade-offs and the.
So Chair McLeod, I have a question. In your proposal, if, just trying to narrow what your proposal is, would it be new construction, the additional square footage, that any standard would apply to that new area?
It would have to apply to the whole building.
So it would retroactively apply to the whole building?
Well, yeah, and then once you've remodeled more than 50% or created an addition that's greater than 50%, you've essentially created a new building. I mean, it, it's considered new construction for the purposes of fire sprinklers, you know, in some cases, I don't know. Major remodels, major additions trigger these things on other projects. Trigger higher standards. I don't know where the.
So we did not address additions, but the change of occupancy type was to address that. So that's not a change of use, but a change of occupancy type, which would happen if it were changing from one use to the other, that, you know, from any, don't quote me on any of these, you know, like a residential use to an assembly use, or a retail to a restaurant. That would be a change of occupancy type, which we originally had in, so, just to be clear. So we already had that portion of it. What we didn't include is the addition, so.
I don't know, I think that, like, our, you know, the policy goals are to create more housing, like, we are way low on our arena, there's no way we're gonna make it, like, if we're, you know, if we're, if our emphasis is on, I don't think that we should be dedicating space for bikes in these renovations if it would give us more units. And then for other renovations, like for commercial spaces, like, looking for a vibrant, you know, we have many vacancies on San Pablo Avenue, we have many vacancies along Solano Avenue, and like, I would hate to discourage any businesses from coming in by setting these requirements for them to modify the floor plan in some way that they hadn't anticipated or that would add additional cost. I think we should keep it simple and see how it works for a few years. We can revisit in three years and see if modifications are needed, if we need to go to, you know, the bedroom model, or we need to consider these changes of occupancy. But right now, I think that, I would recommend we just stick with what we have and see if it, if it works.
I'd support that approach.
Other ideas, thoughts? You know, the idea of two locked doors access, I think is important. You know, and we definitely do not want the door opening onto the street. I love the suggestion about a self-closing door, absolutely critical. Yeah.
I'm gonna actually have the chair either open the public hearing or keep it to, yeah.
We can't take comment. Appreciate your thoughts, but, yeah, and then.
Would those be put into the standards?
Yeah, that should be, yeah, that's standards, definitely. Yeah, definitely into standards. I think the standards, you know, definitely need to be more robust in terms of anti-theft.
Agreed.
Yeah. Well, do we have a motion, or what do we need? Do you want to revise it and bring it back to us, or?
That is up to you. What I, what I would recommend, it seems like there is a motion that can be made on the ordinance and be moved forward, if that indeed works. And the standards, as you can see. see, are with a big draft on it, so we are still working on them. So what I recommend about that is, um, we hear your comments, I would like to go, if this moves forward, take the standards as well to, to City Council, get their comments on it. Um, these are intended to be updated and promulgated by the Community Development Director, so we can come back once we heard comments. I think it could be appropriate to bring the standards for input from the expertise of the other commissions, so that might be something that would be useful, especially if we're developing, um, standards for events and other things. It, I think the more we hear about people who have practical experience in what works and doesn't work is just gonna make it a better document. So my recommendation would be, we've heard your comments on the standards, keep it as the draft working document as we move forward. Try to see if there's a motion that can move forward on the ordinance, so we can keep that going and potentially not worry about AB 306, but I'm not worried about it. But, you know, no.
Uh, can, can you summarize the changes that I think you, you understood we had consensus on?
So it would be, moving forward, a recommendation to City Council with the draft, with the draft Parking Amendments 2028-03-OC regarding bicycle parking with the following modifications. One, it will be referenced here, and there would be a section in our FAR floor area ratio section that would exempt protected bicycle parking square footage from FAR calculations. Um, number two, that the applicability would only apply to new construction, not to change of occupancy type. Number three, um, that under protected bicycle spaces, we would increase from 20% to 40% um, the number of required bicycle spaces that shall accommodate large bicycles.
No, it was the second one.
I heard both, and then for the second one, 50% increase from 20 to 50, the number that have electrical sockets that are accessible to the space. And then removing, what I would actually say, um, the second portion of both one and two, to standards, um, the in-ground level spaces that do not require lifting in area are at least 10 feet in length, I would like to move that portion to the standards. I'd like to move the portion of each electrical socket must be accessible to horizontal bicycle parking spaces, including a portion of large bicycles, um, to the standards, and move number three completely to the standards and have those solidified in the standards, and then we can also update them based on changes to technology and uses, use patterns. And those are what I recorded as the consensus agreements.
Well, that seems reasonable. Do we have someone who can...
How about if I, I'm not gonna try to resummarize what you just said, but make a motion to approve as refined by staff?
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Commissioner Moment's seconds. Let's vote. Commissioner Wadi?
Aye.
Mr. Pilch?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Moment?
Yes.
I vote aye as well. All right, let's, uh, let's keep the show on the road. That item is finished. Item 5-3 has been continued to September. Any presentations or announcements?
No, August is, oh...
I have an announcement, but a question of staff. Do we have, um, a new Community Development Director and/or any other changes in community development?
Well, we do, so, um, we have hired Dina Tassini, most recently from the city of Tiburon, and she starts on Monday, so that will be very exciting. Um, I guess the only other development that is not quite related, but we had had a little bit of reorganization, so my transportation colleagues are no more in community development, but have been relocated to Public Works, so I don't get to see Ben's lovely face every day. Um, and that, I think, for kind of our realm is, is it, that's a lot for our small city.
Okay, and with that, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.